Robert. Call the meeting to order. This is the Glen County Mainland and Island Planning Commission's special call, joint work session. Couple of things I'd like to do, I'd like to introduce John Gentry. He's our Assistant County Administrator. John?
Yes, sir, Mr. Uster. Thank you for the opportunity to just say a few words in advance. As you see, we've got a great crowd here to provide some input tonight on this zoning review process. So, we're, you know, I encourage you to strongly be in receipt mode of tonight so that we can maximize the opportunity for our citizens to provide input into the process, keeping our dialogue amongst ourselves and amongst, back and forth with the citizens as much as possible so that we can really receive those key elements of it. I will mention that we've received multiple written comments already up until this date in time. And we'll compile all of those written comments along with, we have a staff person here that will take notes from tonight's meeting as well. So, we'll compile all of those comments and then we'll submit those to you in one large written format, if you will, of all of our citizen feedback that we've received. Stephanie will also show you where we're receiving online format input as well. So, that way you'll have it all consolidated into one document and will be some version control because I know there's various submittals that we've received throughout the process that may be older comments or maybe duplicate us. We want to make sure that you're receiving the most current information from our citizens. Look forward to the discussion from our citizens tonight and I'll turn it over to Stephanie as she's got a couple of key things that she'll talk about as we go through the process. So, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Stephanie Lee from the Planning Manager. And as Mr. Gentry said, I just have a few things that I'm going to go over behind before we start the public comment session. And as he mentioned, we do have an area on our website that we are putting everything from the zoning code update and we have recently kind of revamped that to try to make it as easy as possible for everyone to find the information. So, it is, our website is glencounty.org and so we do have a screenshot of the homepage on the screen. We do have a button at the bottom of the home screen that the green area is pointing to that you can click on that button and that'll get you to the information on the drafts. And one of the reasons I'm sharing this really tonight is as we continue to move forward with this process through this fall, we will have additional drafts as we know and just so the public and the commissioners and everyone knows, you know, where they will be able to find this. So, they will consistently be able to go to the same spot on the website and find the updated drafts and the updated public comments. So, this next page is where you kind of land when you hit that button and then you click on this link here. And then this is our page where we do have the draft house. So, there's two kind of blue buttons at the top that are the zoning code as well as the subdivision regulations. And the drafts that we are taking public comment on tonight are the August 8th version of the zoning ordinance and the July 30th version of the subdivision regulations. And as you can see underneath those buttons, we do have the older drafts because we have had numerous drafts throughout the time we've been working on this. So, we do have those older drafts if anyone does want to do a comparison. And we do specify whether they're a red line marked up version or a clean version, meaning all the edits have been, you know, strike underline has been taken out and it's just a clean version to view. And then at the bottom of this page, we do have a public comment form. So, anyone who's interested in submitting public comments, they can submit it through this form that's on the website and that does go straight to the county staff and then we will distribute the comments as well. We also have an email address, zoningupdate@glencounty-ga.gov that we are also taking comments at as well. So, when we do receive public comments in the written form that are coming in through either this form or to the zoning update email address, what we started doing this past week and then we will be updating this each Friday with all the new comments we've received, we do have all of these public comments on this page. So, here's the button here, just as view public comments that anyone can click on and view the current comments that we've received. So, in the agenda packet that you all received for tonight's meeting, we did include a key changes document. What we really wanted to highlight were some of the bigger changes between the current regulations that we've had on the books, you know, really since the 1960s and these drafts that we are currently under review. And the zoning review team members were extremely instrumental in putting together this key changes document. So, I'm really appreciative, all of our staff is very appreciative of everyone's input on this. And so, the full key changes document is in the packet that's online. So, what I did here though tonight was just kind of pull a few things from that document just really for the interest of time, just to kind of highlight a few of the examples of things that we, elements that we have in this new draft. So, for the zoning ordinance, the working draft changes are on the lefty side and then the current ordinance changes are on the right in this table. So, some of the things that we're working on with this working draft, we have established a new zoning district called GMU which is to really try to get at some of the workforce housing issues and creating an ability to have live work units within a zoning district that we don't really currently have that ability under the current ordinance unless someone were to establish a planned development district. The next one is, anyone who is familiar with the island knows we do have the village residential or the village preservation design review overlay. And that is an overlay that is over the village residential and the village mixed use zoning districts. And what we've done in this draft is really consolidate those design standards into the VR and the VMU. So, this is really kind of more of a streamlining attempt so that we're kind of streamlining development if someone is developing within the village area. So, the design standards are still kept. They're very important for the character of the village, but we have just consolidated those into the zoning district. We also have, we see a lot of this on the island. We have a little bit on the mainland, mostly on the island. We have substandard lots of record which are lots that are smaller than what the zoning district allows. Currently, we have kind of a variety of different thresholds of how substandard a lot can be and then what the regulations are. Again, this was a streamlining effort to kind of simplify what those regulations are and really kind of have simpler standards that's easier to understand and know what someone can do when they have a lot that falls under this category. And then we did make some changes in this working draft for parking. There were some reduction in parking for multifamily and commercial. There's also some requirements added for short-term rentals and larger dwellings. Under exterior lighting, we did move the sea turtle lighting from the beach and dune section of the ordinance to the exterior lighting section and did add some additional changes to that as well. There's also some proposed changes to tree canopy preservation ordinance. That ordinance has been in effect since 2018. So, what often happens when ordinance have been used for a few years, we kind of see where there may be some ways to improve on that ordinance based on kind of what we're seeing in the community with development. So, that's really one of the attempts with these changes. For uses, any kind of allowed uses in the zoning, right now, all those uses are listed under zoning districts. So, someone would go to like the highway commercial zoning district and see exactly what's allowed there. What we've done in these drafts is there's a table of uses. So, if you want to do a grocery store, you can go to the table of uses and see every zoning district that you can do a grocery store in. So, that is a good element for economic development and anyone that's looking to see where they could do a particular use in one table, they can see, you know, anywhere in the county, they could do that. We also have some changes to the keeping of pets. There have been some interest over the years to allow chickens, goats, small pigs or pygmy pigs, I think they're called, in residential areas. And so, we do have established some regulations on allowing those and, you know, with restrictions in residential areas. Currently in the zoning ordinance, those are only allowed in the forest agricultural zoning district. And kind of getting back to development standards, right now, under the current zoning, we only have a site coverage requirement for a couple of our zoning districts. When we talk about single-family zoning, the only single-family zoning is village residential that we have a 50% site coverage requirement. And what we are proposing here is to have a site coverage requirement for all the single-family zoning districts and it would be 60%. And then a few other things under, for this working draft, we have looked at some lot size reduction for some of the higher density districts and again, that's also looking at kind of how to encourage more workforce housing and maybe some of our districts that we already allow higher density, you know, are those appropriate to have smaller lots for single-family in those zones. Also looked at some changes to the billboard section of the ordinance and then a variety of different terminology definition kind of updates and changes. And so, that was really kind of just in a nutshell, a few of the bigger changes for the zoning code. And so, under the subdivision regulations, which is also part of this review, we did look at, under the working draft, having some traffic study thresholds. Currently in our ordinances, we can require a developer to submit a traffic study if the county engineer requests it. But this really would kind of codify the thresholds of when a traffic study, you know, would be required for certain types of developments. And we also have some language about private access easements and how many lots a private access easement can serve. Currently, it can serve up to four lots. We have expanded that to six lots if those lots are larger. So, if the two acre, a larger lot, then you could have a private access easement serve up to six lots. And also in the preliminary plat stage for subdivisions, we are asking for some additional information on drainage because as we know, particularly on the island but at the mainland as well, there are a lot of drainage issues in our community. So, this is an attempt to try to get more information on stormwater and drainage as early as possible in the development process. So, we are asking for drainage calculations at the preliminary plat stage. And the same for asking for information on wetland delineation confirmation as well. And then something that was changed a few years back was the planning commissions had previously been the reviewer and approval on preliminary plats for subdivisions. That was a change made a few years ago that went to staff. So, staff for a few years has been the administrative review and approval on preliminary plats. And this would change for just the island. So, the IPC would be the reviewer and approval for preliminary plats on the island. So, not on the mainland. Mainland would still be administrative, community development staff. But on the island, it would be IPC. And then another change on the island, we, right now, if you were to subdivide a property up to four lots, you could use a kind of shortened subdivision process called an expedited subdivision. It's an administrative process. It all, it's kind of a one stop. It's not a several-stage process. But someone submits a subdivision applications to the community development department. We take it through our review and it's approved administratively. But this change would require all new lots, regardless of how many, all new lots on St. Simons would not be able to utilize that process. They would need to go through the full preliminary plat construction plan and final plat process. And that's just on the island, not on the mainland. So, these are some of the changes for subdivision that we talked about. And so, really just kind of our next steps and for the public to know kind of where we're headed. We are looking at releasing another draft within the next month. That next draft would incorporate any changes from public comment that we're getting through the SNC process as well as the written public comment. And then we are planning an October 23 joint work session with both planning commissions here in this room again at 5:30. And that would be for discussion amongst the planning commissioners. We are not going to be taking public comment during that meeting. So, that would really be their meeting in October to really dig into the regulations and have discussion and look at ways to move that forward. So, at this time, we do have, the next item on the agenda is the public comment session. And we have advertised that it would be five minutes per person. And I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate that. It was a good presentation. I would like to say that the comments that Stephanie made about the key points, those are only a few. We've got many more and we'll be updating that as we get information from you all and as we make additional changes. And I know myself, there were several things I would like to have included tonight, but we didn't. But anyway, let's get started. I would ask you all to abide by the five minutes. We'll be keeping time. So, if you would, number one, first person would like to come up and make some comments? I would like to hear from it. Somebody? Somebody's got something to say. Yes, sir. If you would introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Mark Dodd. I'm a wildlife biologist with Georgia Department of Natural Resources. And my primary responsibility is sea turtle conservation. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all, the planning commissions, joint planning commissions, tonight to talk about the part of the ordinance that, or the potential change in the ordinance related to sea turtle conservation. So, the loggerhead sea turtle is our primary nesting sea turtle on Georgia beaches. They have an incredible life history. Hatchlings emerge from our beaches. They spend the first 15 to 20 years of their lives on the high seas in the North Atlantic. Ultimately, they return to their natal beach here in Georgia at 35 years of age to nest. So, we think of them as our turtles and we spend a lot of time trying to manage that population. Our population sustained a long-term decline. We had a lot of nesting in the 50s and 60s. It declined to a low point. In 2004, we had less than 400 nests in the state. At that point, we were very concerned about losing them as a species. Through a lot of active management and hard work, the population has increased about 3.5% to 4% a year. So, now we're averaging around 3,000 nests a year and we're trending toward recovery. Our population model suggests that we still have another 10 years or so of hard work for the population to increase back to historic levels. So, we're on the right track, but we're not there yet. In terms of conservation, maintaining high hatchling success and producing enough hatchlings for population recovery is an important component of our conservation program. And one threat to this high productivity is misorientation as a result of artificial light. So, loggerheads evolved on beaches without any artificial light and they developed this mechanism to find their way from the nest to the ocean. They go to the lightest point on the horizon. And on a undeveloped beach without any artificial light, the ocean is always the lightest point on the horizon. And so, unfortunately, the use of artificial light can disrupt this sea finding behavior. And often hatchlings end up going the wrong way. They end up in the dunes or in the road where they're run over by cars. They die from exposure or eaten by predators. It's also important to remember that it's been shown experimentally that not only are hatchlings misoriented by artificial light, but the adult females tend to nest in lower densities in places where there's a lot of artificial light. So, not only does beachfront artificial lighting affect hatchling orientation, but also nesting densities. So, as an example, last year, we had about 8% of our nests in the state had misoriented hatchlings in them. And of those, about 33% of those nests, 33% of the total were Glen County beaches. So, that includes Little St. Simons, Sea Island, St. Simons and Jekyll. This year, about 6% of our nests were, had misoriented hatchlings statewide and about 40% of those were in Glen County beaches. So, Glen County first recognized beachfront lighting as an issue in the 80s and adopted an ordinance to minimize artificial light in 1991. The current ordinance is somewhat outdated. We've learned a lot about sea turtle biology since then. And so, we're hoping to improve the lighting ordinance to reflect what we know now about sea turtle orientation. So, one important thing we learned is that, since the ordinance was written, is that loggerhead adults and hatchlings are primarily attracted to short wavelength light. So, it's the blue and the green part of the spectrum.
Mark, let's get to the point. You've got about a minute and a half.
Okay, minute and a half. Okay, so, there's basically three parts. So, in regard to the August 8th version of the ordinance revision, there's three things that we're concerned about. The first one would be, in the introduction, we would like to see the removal of, it says beachfront exterior artificial lighting is permitted on nesting beaches in Glen County, including frontal dunes. We'd like to see that, including frontal dunes section removed. For number two, exterior artificial light fixtures which are specifically prohibited, we'd like to add two types of lights. First, fixtures that are not completely shielded by an opaque material blocking direct view of bulbs or diodes from the beach and also any lighting that is decorative in purpose or intent. And then finally, prohibition of certain beach activities utilizing artificial lights affecting turtles. We would like to add authorized vehicles operating on the beach on a routine, non-emergency basis must be equipped with lights producing wavelengths not less than 560 nanometers, which is the longer wavelength light. And then finally, the use of lanterns, flashlights or other portable light sources should be prohibited except turtle safe lighting producing light wavelengths not less than 560 nanometers. So, those are the primary comments. A couple of important things to remember. The lighting ordinance is seasonal. It's just May through October. Has an effect on a very small number of beachfront homeowners and businesses. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I would ask if, yeah, if everyone has a section number that we can refer to, it would be very helpful. And I think we're all familiar with what's in our draft. So, if you could get to what your changes would be, it would be very helpful. Anyone else? Next?
Hi, I'm Steve Newell. I earned a PhD in biological oceanography at the University of Miami School of Marine and Atmospheric Sciences. After a few years of working for the University of Miami, I was lucky enough to win a competition for an open spot at the University of Georgia Marine Institute on Sapporo Island. I spent 20-plus years on Sapporo learning how it is that our very productive marsh grasses support high rates of marine animal production. I identified the microbes that enable this support and learned how and learned how these important microbes are affected by environmental factors. About the time of my retirement from the University of Georgia, I was lucky enough to meet a fine lady from Jekyll Island and we married and moved into her home on Jekyll. One of the first natural things on Jekyll that attracted my attention was the famous sea turtle nesting that occurs there. I soon learned that dark beaches are necessary for successful sea turtle reproduction. I looked up the beach lighting rules for Jekyll Island State Park and found them not to be as effective as they could have been for helping our sea turtles. I offered a draft proposal for a new beach lighting ordinance and the authority adopted it. My wife Bonnie and I based the draft ordinance largely on the proven effective ordinances in effect on northeastern Florida beaches. The Jekyll Island Authority brought local sea turtle scientist Mark Dodd, from whom we just heard, onboard to polish the ordinance. And the result is the current Jekyll Island Beach Lighting Ordinance. Although Jekyll Island is a state park, it has to have non-state income for its support. And this comes from the many tourist enterprises in the park. The new beach lighting ordinance has worked on Jekyll, allowing successful nestings of loggerhead turtles to increase without severely handicapping the tourist businesses. A similar set of rules for St. Simons Island should be able to function in the same way. Thank you for the opportunity to present my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Eleanor Towson and I'm a fifth grader at Oakwood Door Point Elementary. Growing up on St. Simons Island has been such a treat because I get to learn about the animals in the ocean and I even get to see some of them. One of my favorite animals in the ocean is sea turtles. At school, I've learned a lot about them and that has helped me understand how important and amazing they are. I even did a project on Kemp's Ridley sea turtles one year. When I'm at the beach, I specifically think about them when I fill in holes and pick up trash. I have always loved learning about our ocean wildlife, but when my mom joined sea turtle patrol, I have definitely become more interested in sea turtles. Every time my mom got home from her sunrise walk, my first question was, "Did you see any nests?" And anytime she had a new nest, we would all celebrate and look at the photos. I love going to nest inventories to see how many eggs hatch and if there are any live babies to see released. When we have babies to release, I love to name them. I even named some after me and my sisters. I also named one Bob. I love to imagine that in 35 years, I'll be old enough to be on sea turtle patrol when some of these turtles will come back to nest and I could be the, the one to find their nest. Seeing the time my mom, Ms. Catherine, and my neighbor Jess spent helping the sea turtles makes me want to do the same. I hope that our community makes changes to our beaches so that turtles will want to come back because I will still be here waiting for them. I hope that we do much, so much to take care of our turtles that I get to brag to my mom one day about how many nests I had than she ever had. I also hope that in the future, people will come to St. Simons not just to go to the beach, but to learn about sea turtles and other ocean wildlife. Thank you so much for all you have done to help sea turtles and I hope we can do more.
Thank you, Ms. Towson.
Good job.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Judith Nichols and I am a homeowner and primary resident of St. Simons Island. I'm not a native of coastal Georgia, but I married one and moved here as soon as I could. First coming to St. Simons Island in 1992. And I'm a retired law enforcement officer and now a volunteer with the St. Simons Island Sea Turtle Project and a full-time Realtor. And in my position as a Realtor, I have wonderful opportunities to encounter folks who are considering our community to move to. And one of the things that they're drawn here for, of course, is the coastal lifestyle and the rich natural resources that we have. So I am here to speak on behalf of a stronger lighting ordinance for St. Simons Island. As a permitted volunteer, we spend countless hours out there on the beach patrolling during the nesting season to identify sea turtle nests, to mark the nests, inventory them once they hatch, and also to educate the public. And in my roles as a volunteer and as a real estate agent, I find that the public is often not educated about what it takes to preserve the sea turtle population. But once they are, they find that, you know, these are simple things that all of us can do. Of course, I believe strongly and advocate for personal property rights, but I also believe that with those rights comes a strong responsibility to protect our natural resources. So I would just like to thank you for working with Mark Dodd and Catherine Ridley and taking the time to evaluate our lighting ordinance and ask that you consider adopting the changes that they have suggested to bring us in line with other coastal communities in our area that are seeing stronger numbers with sea turtle nestings and hatchlings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newell. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for taking public comment on the very important draft zoning ordinance. I am supportive of what everybody said about lighting.
Please, please.
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry. My name is Megan DeRoziers. I am a resident of Glen County and I am also the executive director of a nonprofit called 100 Miles. I'm very supportive of what everyone has said about the sea turtle lighting, but I'm here also to speak about the broader issue of zoning and what this zoning ordinance will do for not just the people who are moving here or potentially want to develop their property, but also the people who live here and have moved here for the reasons that so many people have talked about, because it is a special place. Zoning is about property rights, but it, and it tells people, one, what they can do with their property, but it also tells people what they can expect from the county in terms of services and from their neighbors in terms of what their neighbors are allowed to do. It protects our quality of life and it also protects our ecosystem services. And so my comments tonight really have to do with two major areas. And the first is what we can do in our rural areas. Currently, our rural areas are governed by Section 5.11, 5.1.1, which is the FA section. And then also Conservation Preservation Zone, which is 5.0, sorry, Section 3.2. In the FA zone, there are two main areas in the county that are zoned FA, which you all probably know. One is the north end of St. Simons. Not all parcels on the north end of St. Simons are zoned FA. And the other is west of 95 in West Glen County. Those two areas are completely different in terms of character, in terms of traffic, and in terms of density. And so what we are recommending is in Section 5.1.1, two different, there's a, we would like to see an island FA and a mainland FA. The island FA should be more dense than the mainland FA because frankly, the mainland FA has tens of thousands or, I think it has about 52,000 acres. Might have more than that. But whereas the island FA only has about 900 acres. So we submitted this comment letter on August 23. It outlines our changes regarding the FA. The other part of this is the protection of the marsh. So much of the Conservation Preservation Section is applicable to the salt marsh all across the county. Currently, in the zoning ordinance that is under review by you, it lists the permitted uses as there are some things you can do to develop the marsh. This is not something that we would like to see. And so we would like that all of the uses currently permitted as P in the use table under the Conservation Preservation to be specially considered. Now certainly, some uses should be specially considered. For example, there is a treatment facility for water that could potentially be, you, the marsh could be utilized for. But that should not be a permitted use outright. It should be something that the planning commission and the county commission consider under special circumstances. So I think we need to be more specific and careful about what we do to preserve the areas that make our county special, especially the areas that provide ecosystem services and the areas that provide timberland and agricultural land and, and land for, for horses and other animals. Finally, I would like to speak about buffers. Again, we need to consider what are people who live here, what they can expect from their neighbors. In many areas across the coast, large industrial developments are being permitted in places that were previously zoned for agriculture or forest agriculture. And there are no buffers, or there are not significant buffers, to protect neighboring landowners. So we would like for you in Section 2.2.3 to make use of the type C buffer size, which is already listed in the table, but is not listed, and that's the 100-foot buffer, to protect residential areas from, from general industrial. So that, those are my comments. Again, I'm, we're supportive of the lighting recommendations, but I wanted to make sure these get in there too. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. DeRoziers. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Scott Coleman. I live on St. Simons Island. I work at Little St. Simons Island, is the ecological manager. Want to comment a little bit more on the, just in, in support of the lighting changes for sea turtles that my colleague Mark Dodd with Georgia DNR has recommended. He's really been a leader in sea turtle conservation for years and I agree with all the, the changes that he recommended. On Little St. Simons, we've been protecting turtle nests since 1987. And I've been there for 19, this has been my 19th summer and we've seen a huge increase in numbers on, on turtle nests. Early on in my time there, we had just a little over 40 nests. We had 165 this year, so a huge increase. We are obviously a dark beach, so more of our concerns are around covering our nests for raccoons and, and other, other predators were able to do that successfully. But we do still continue to have, we, we also have challenges from, from lighting and light pollution. Mark mentioned that so much of the misorientations, the hatchlings that are going in the wrong direction are in Glen County along our coast. And, and that includes Little St. Simons. We're one of the islands that has some of the highest misorientations. And, and a lot of that's because of, of light pollution here within the county. So we would appreciate the changes and also are excited about building more of an economy around ecotourism and around turtle conservation. That's something that we've been able to do over the years. We have people coming from all over the country to Little St. Simons in the hottest, buggiest months of the summer, July and August, to see, for the opportunity to see turtles and to see hatchlings. And we think that could also be the case on St. Simons. So thank you all. Thank you for all your work on, on updating this important ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Hi, my name is Caroline Shemtov. I am a resident of Glen County. I'm a speech therapist and I moved back here from Atlanta just a year ago. But I have seen the beach change dramatically since I moved away when I was in college until now. East Beach used to be just a couple sand dunes and then you could see homes with lights. And now, from East Beach all the way up to Gools Inlet, it has expanded dramatically just from the hurricanes that we have coming through and dumping sand all over. And now, when I was a kid, there were no, no sea turtles here. And it's incredible to see what has happened with the beaches growing and now we have animals coming, animal life all over the beach. It's beautiful. But one of our great, favorite pastimes as a family is to go out on the beach at night. And we park at Gools Inlet and we walk out, out on the channel, all the way out to as far as we can get before we can actually see in the dark. It takes us all the way, walking all the way past all the new dunes to get beyond the lights from all the houses. There's several houses that it looks like it's the Fourth of July there every single night. You can go out there at midnight and it's lit up like a fire, like a bonfire. And it's not just one home. There's so many out there that are like that. And we've gone out there to see the recent, the, all the shooting stars recently and it's been just so much light pollution out there that it's hard to see anything. And I'm glad that y'all have taken this into serious consideration because we haven't had sea turtles. When I, in my childhood and in my lifetime here until now, we haven't had this opportunity to develop what God has given, this beautiful community. And I'm thanking you all for considering it and making sure that we will continue having sea turtles for my children and grandchildren. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. DeRoziers. Anyone else?
My name is Cindy Denard and I live on St. Simons. And I'm a business owner at Southeast Adventure Outfitters. We have an office on St. Simons and in Brunswick as well. And I'm also a member of the St. Simons Island Sea Turtle Patrol. So I've been volunteering there for five or six years. So at Southeast Adventure, we have a store in the village and people walk in all the time and ask questions about the area. We have maps and really, for the last 30 years, we've been talking about how amazing coastal Georgia is. And we do a lot of kayak tours and boat tours and really thousands of people a year. And probably the most excited people get is when they learn that we have sea turtles on our beaches. And so it's a really neat thing to highlight what an amazing place we have here and get people excited about all the other things we have as well. Through volunteering with the Sea Turtle Project on St. Simons, I've really learned a lot about, a lot of things about sea turtles in this area, things I never thought of. And I really appreciate all the things I've learned through the DNR and through Catherine and everybody that worked so hard to focus on those animals in particular. And everybody asks me about how the turtles do on St. Simons. I have a family that lives on East Beach and they always want to know how the nests are doing. And so this summer, when we just had a few nests and a lot of them got misoriented, it was just a really sad story to tell and to talk about. So when I became aware of this opportunity to make the ordinances for the lighting more strong and that you were interested in working on that and working hard on improving the ordinances, then I got excited and I wanted to show my support.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Kilgore. And I appreciate the opportunity for you to have public comment. I've been hoping that someone would have a good judgment to terminate this ill-advised exercise. I can't imagine who thought it would be a good idea to have citizens write code or ordinances. I'm ready to be convinced. Otherwise, when you tell me that you've performed your own appendectomy or you are trying cases in court representing yourself, then logically, I may come to see the wisdom in you writing an ordinance. For some reason, we have a legal department that is not capable of revising these ordinances and producing a document suitable for the citizens of Glen County. The fact is that this project is six years old. Started and approved originally in November of 2018. My way of thinking, if you've been doing something for six years and you haven't succeeded, you probably should quit and, and develop another plan. But here we are. The two documents, the zoning draft and the subdivision draft, are replete with typographical errors and missing sections. An example is specifically in the stormwater management area. For years, I have been asking the Island Planning Commission specifically to pay attention to the Georgia Stormwater Manual as well as to the South Georgia Stormwater Supplement. It's routinely been ignored by both the IPC and the Board of Commissioners over time. It's routinely been ignored by both the IPC and the Board of Commissioners over time. Ms. Leaf has referenced that uh there is an attempt to inject some uh support and compliance with regard to drainage. But um uh for those of you who've lived here a good long while, you know that we've got severe drainage and stormwater problems here. And unreasonably, the uh Island Planning Commission has seen fit to approve site plans and um final plats and anything that would come before them without any reference to uh stormwater management. And it was always referred to as being done in the construction phase. The Stormwater Supplement, South Georgia Stormwater Supplement, is very specific. And uh it does call for um the site plan work to be, to include stormwater plans and uh very specific uh references to what needs to be done for a site plan. I would suggest that you take a hard look at that and uh you include that in in the next draft. The uh final plat section, I'm heartened to see that's intact. For a number of years, I have been uh writing to the Board of Commissioners as well as to the staff that you, they have routinely ignored the final plat section. There are two specific criteria, either you have the infrastructure installed and inspected and approved, or you must have a bond. And for some reason, this Board of Commissioners and the management of Glen County has approved final plats that have neither the completed infrastructure nor the bond. And uh this ordinance does contain the requirements just as section seven ten did in the previous ordinance. And and so I would hope that uh it will be enforced and and complied with in the future. In summary, I think that this is an ill-advised attempt at citizens doing something for which they're not trained, nor that they have the knowledge. With all due respect to all of you, um I know you're entirely capable in in the work that you do on a day-to-day basis, but I I would wager that you've probably never written ordinances prior to this experience. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Hello, everybody, my name is Cindy Couturier, and I don't come to these things very often, as you can tell by the way I'm dressed, and I apologize. Not much gets me away from my evening routine of hanging out with my dogs and just chilling out with my kids. But when I heard that there was a sea turtle meeting about the lighting, I said, I'm coming. Here I am, and I appreciate y'all and your, what you do and the time you spend. There's a lot of other stuff going on, but I'm so happy that you're having public comment, because these little creatures, they have no words. And some of us have to have the words for them. And Mark Dodd knows his stuff, Catherine Ridley knows her stuff. And I'm encouraging you to um take care of these creatures who have no words and listen to the people who really know what they're talking about and hopefully incorporate all their recommendations, because that's what makes our place so special, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just give me a moment to get this. Ask for some grace on my way out the door here, I um managed to, uh my computer ate my homework, so to speak, and deleted my remarks, so I'm gonna do my very best. I'm gonna time myself. Hi, I'm Catherine Ridley, I know a lot of you, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you, this draft obviously represents a whole lot of work. Probably unappreciated at times, but it's clear you've made a lot of progress and we're grateful. I hope tonight, you know, we've had a lot of these conversations in small groups. We've had a lot about turtles tonight, it is the turtle meeting, right? And I hope what that represents to you is it's not just me or a few people talking to you or hearing about this. There's a whole lot of people in this room, online, all over the state, who are invested. Twenty twenty-four is actually the sixtieth anniversary of sea turtle conservation efforts in Georgia. That's a long legacy and a heck of a lot of work and early mornings. And so coming up here tonight, I am representing those folks and, you know, my predecessor, some of y'all who may have known Gloria Ramsor, who is known as the Turtle Lady, and, you know, she grew up in the thirties here, before there was a causeway, eating turtle eggs. And then in her seventies was actually the lead volunteer for our project. And so that represents to me, when we learn and we know better, we adapt and we do better. Also thinking of our next generation, my number one turtle helper, my five-year-old son who's here with me tonight, and young volunteers like Eleanor, who you heard from, you know, it's hard to get grown adults to come and speak at these, and she did a remarkable job. But she's right, this is their beach. And the hatchlings that are leaving Saint Simons and Glen County this summer will return, not for another thirty-five years. And when they do, the decisions that all of you and all of us are gonna make in this ordinance will impact whether they can go out there and have that reunion that I've promised them. Considering that our current ordinance is at least that old, if not many decades older, I think it behooves all of us to make the most of this opportunity. Now, Mark and I and several of us have submitted writ- written comments, trust that you have reviewed those closely, so I'm not gonna go through point by point, but I want to reiterate, emphasize a few things. One, this is not a new issue that we're asking you to consider, we have an ordinance on the books, we have an established sea turtle program. Our volunteers are top-notch, our ordinance is not. You know, lighting impacts both hatchlings and it deters turtles from nesting, so it impacts every aspect of our work out there. In the time since we had our ordinance, virtually every coastal community has gotten on board. This is not some revolutionary idea, in fact, we're the outlier. And when we look at those coastal communities and look right here in Glen County, we have a great model in Jekyll Island, and they're a very developed beach. People can tell the difference, and they come and I talk to beachgoers of all backgrounds, all political affiliations, all interests and ages, and they ask me, you know, why? I see turtles on billboards, why, why aren't we doing more like we do in Florida or South Carolina? So they recognize there's um more work to be done. In terms specifically of flashlights and lanterns, um what we're not asking for there is some sort of nightly enforcement. We're not asking for that, we're not asking for people to go without all lights. What we're asking is that when there are big issues, as there are every summer, with things like a lantern or a party on the beach, that we have the tools to address that. Right now, it's just me going and asking, would you kindly please? And that doesn't get us very far, and so we need that tool as a baseline to work from. Also, I'll just point out, this is my son's favorite toy, you might have seen some red light around the room. We're just asking that people in, not forego all light, but choose red LED alternatives, which are turtle-friendly and readily and cheaply available um everywhere from Walmart to Ace Hardware and everywhere in between. Finally, I just want to illustrate the point here and what's at stake. You know, we talk a lot about the consequences of what these changes might mean, and um just to illustrate the consequences of us not having this ordinance. I'll share this link with all of you again, but you may have seen in the newspaper and in some of my comments that our, actually a hundred percent of the nests on Saint Simons had significant misorientations. We lost an entire nest of threatened turtles, they're all gone. Because what happened is, on the night that nest number one hatched after about sixty days of constant monitoring, there were lights in that East Beach area. We don't know if it was one tourist who left, left a porch light on or something more significant. But what you can see, you know, we have to, like, look at these later, you know, here's the ocean, and where'd they go? They went in the exact opposite direction. Despite having a clear slope downward to the beach and a reflection of the ocean on the water, and you can see those tracks. They look like mountain bike tracks, but they're heading, you know, right towards, right towards those homes. And so that tells us that there's something wrong there and there's something we need to address. And this is what we've been trying to do with all of your help and the progress and 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 the gratitude for the conversations we've had. This is why we're, we're caring about it. I'll also just point out, um when that happens and we put it out there, again, the public is frustrated, because they know that we have resources like Mark and the Turtle Project who understand just these very simple tools that need to be in place. And that year after year after year, it's the same story. And so there is um just a lot of frustration that we're dealing with, that we haven't enacted these changes and now especially when we have a sensible, common sense solution spelled out for us. I'm gonna let you go, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Ridley.
I'm an educator, I've gotta go with props everywhere.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jonathan Shipley, and I thank you guys for your public service, because uh sometimes you're heroes, sometimes you're villains. It's a, it's a tough job, so thank you. I think, I think the um theme of tonight is that we all are here because we care about our community, we want to make it healthy. Some people are for some things and while others aren't, but the thing that rings true of all of us is that we all want what's best for our community. Uh we need to check the box on the sea turtle um changes, things that help our community. But what concerns me right now is some of the uh changes to the subdivision regulations, short-term rentals. Uh because to do all of these things that we're doing, or proposing, or not proposing, they all take money and revenue, property taxes, tourism, real estate, our community depends on it. And I think if uh some of these regulations are put into place and curtailed, it will devastate our tourism, our real estate, and our short-term rentals. For instance, on the buildable, buildable area for real estate, I think it needs to be larger. And the addition of impermeable areas and permeable areas being counted in part of that footprint, that reduces really the, the size of a home that can be built, which is basically a four-bedroom house on a six thousand square foot lot. And that, that's a tough thing to accomplish. And if that is blanketed over all residential lot sites, it is really gonna be tough to, it's gonna hurt us. And then, short-term rentals, a lot of people, you know, they come to enjoy all these beautiful things on our island. And um having, having one parking space for each bedroom, I mean, how's that gonna work for condominium owners? People that have bought these and come and enjoy their condominiums, but also depend on the tourists to come to town and rent those condos. They're not gonna be able to do that anymore. I just think that while the spirit is good and what is, what you guys are proposing, it just needs to be thought of very carefully, because it will have very negative consequences for years and years to come. It will hurt our, our local economy. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm taking it really short, because that's the way I roll. I'm Pat Cooper, I know many of you, and I want to thank you first of all for all the hard work that everybody has put into this. I cannot imagine the hours and hours y'all have spent, so we do appreciate that. I want to make sure, though, that everyone understands how important all of this is to our local economy. And possibly there could be some unintended consequences with some of the uh drafts that are out here. So I'm gonna just start real quick, uh Article Two, Building, which is section two point one point four B, Building on Substandard Lots of Records, Single Family Dwelling Simplified. I have a huge issue with this, where it says the merging of any substandard lots that currently have a house built spanning the lot. This can be considered taking to me, a lot of people have bought lots, I mean, homes over the years, thinking we're gonna live in it, we're on a, we've bought a lot, paid probably a premium, bought this home because it's on a double lot, and maybe one day it's gonna have functional obsolescence, we might need to tear it down. Maybe there's a son and a daughter, and they're gonna both build two houses, and now all of a sudden they aren't gonna be able to. I just, I just hope that we can really, really look at that. Secondly, which is kind of the same thing, but are on the same page, Site coverage for single-family residential is stated as a maximum of sixty percent in the new draft. And that tells me about, and I'm a realtor by the way, if you don't know. I've lived on Saint Simons for fifty-four years also, so I've seen a lot of changes, good ones and not so good ones. But I'm not a developer, I've never been a developer, but I do like to see people come and enjoy this island like we were able to do when we moved here from Virginia. But the site coverage, sixty percent, I think about the homes I've sold over the years where maybe the host takes up sixty percent of the lot already, but they've got a huge backyard, and they're thinking, when we save enough money, or when the rates go down, or whatever, we'll have the money to put in a pool for our family. And now they won't be able to, but from what I understand, because the pool would be considered part of the sixty percent, if I'm reading this correctly. So I think that needs to really be looked at. And lastly, to talk about the village real quick, because I have an office there and I own a couple pieces of property. And although preserving the character of the village area is important, and I think the regulations could be interpreted that everything is the same or should be the same, I'm not sure that's the intent, but it's kind of sounding like it. I think there's a good bit of personal opinion about the decision-making and the process of what's being, what's being done. I mean, how much weight will the property owner's desired use and their preferred aesthetic based on how they need to utilize the property they own? When I ride through the village right now, there's a lot of mixed uses. We've got tall buildings, short buildings, we've got cottages, we've got contemporary, and it's kind of a, a hodgepodge, but I think that's what makes it charming. And I'm just concerned about who's going to be judging that in the future, and what kind of training will they have? And it sounds very subjective to me about whether a group of five people, ten people, I don't know, don't like something. So I just want us to look really, really hard at that. And then the last thing I'm gonna say, because everybody's talked about the turtles, and I love turtles, but I have a place in Florida, which you've talked about, and, you know, one of the things we do there is from May to the end of October is every owner that has an oceanfront property, whether it's a condo or a home, they have to close their drapes. If you don't close your drapes, you get a fine. And that was never mentioned anywhere, but that would help a lot, I would think. And that's all, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you, Ms. Ridley. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Tessa O'Kane. I'm Tessa O'Kane, I'm a, um, been a resident on Saint Simons for almost forty years, and I recently retired as an elementary teacher. So I just wanted to speak in support of the lighting ordinance. I'm gonna read this to you just so that I stay on track and I don't get on my own nerves diverting that. There's not a resident in Glen County that's not aware that countless people come here, either to visit or to own a home each year. And most really just come here for the sole purpose of the beauty of the beaches and the ocean and the wildlife. Many people make a lot of money from this attraction. Many of us also drive around with license plates, in effort to educate and preserve our unique wildlife. So yes, we do have a responsibility to preserve and protect what sustains our economy and soothes our souls, and for many, provides a personal livelihood. But we can spin it a little bit differently if we look at it not just as a responsibility, but it's also an opportunity, and we can embrace that. It's an opportunity to distinguish ourselves from some other coastal communities, although I think that we're more of the minority in the regard of what we can do in regulation for the, or regards to the lighting. But um if we, if we tout that we're caring custodians about our environment But if we, if we tout that we're caring custodians about our environment, and we do this with billboards and we do this with the license plates that I mentioned, then we can certainly do more in effort to preserve this. But with the popularity of things like electric cars and other movements to be green, it's not a hard stretch to realize that it would really be attractive to visitors and potential homeowners if they know that they're visiting a place that honors rather than harms. And we have an opportunity to also educate visitors and homeowners. And, and that's not something that can be very difficult to do. I spent a large part of my career convincing eight-year-olds that it was fun to learn multiplication facts and long division. We can certainly do this with turtles, that are adorable and kids and adults alike really enjoy. We can teach that being here is synonymous with a will to preserve. We have an opportunity to send a message that honoring and respecting our environment that gives us so much is revered and coveted. And thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to do this, it's not taken for granted, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kane. Anyone else? If there's no one else, then I suppose any closing remarks? John, you have anything left?
I'll just add a couple of things we've shared with a few of you before. So the, the firm Jenkins &amp; Bowen is a well-known reputable company, firm that prioritizes their efforts in zoning law. They are concurrently reviewing our zoning ordinance as we speak, so they, they have the latest draft up to August 8th. Any feedback that we receive from, from citizens that, that the, the planning commission considers, the working group in the planning commission considers, will be sent back to them for review as well. So we've, we've got a lot of concurrent reviews going on, professional staff review by Ms. Leaf and Maurice Postal, the two of them are also professional planners, so they're reviewing it. We've received feedback from professional planners that, that you will receive as well, that are providing some very good, I think, advice and considerations that we should look at. So overall, I'm very pleased with the process. Citizens, although we'll close the, the public comment period on, on this draft, citizens still will have three other opportunities in a public hearing to provide feedback as part of the consideration process. So both the Island Planning Commission will, once you get to the point of receiving this for consideration, the final draft, you'll have one final time for citizens to provide feedback. In addition, the Mainland Planning Commission, when they consider the, the final draft, citizens will have an opportunity for one, one more public hearing. And should you send that to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration and final consideration, rather, citizens also will have one more opportunity for public hearings. So three, three other opportunities to make any final recommendations based on the final draft. So I think you're doing a great job in, in hearing, providing feedback necessary. We've got still opportunities up until midnight tonight to do any additional written comments, but at some point in time, we have, we've gotta stop that so we can get to a final draft. And I think you've heard some very good comments from, from our citizens tonight. We've received some very, very good written comments that we'll, we'll provide you as well. So thank you for the opportunity just to provide some additional comments.
Thank you, Jonathan. And, and I will say that our, our review team is currently working on our next draft, and we've already had a couple of meetings after, after the draft we have now has been produced. And so we're anxious to now involve all the comments that we currently have, that we've got online, and then plus the comments we've received tonight, and hopefully we'll get that out, out soon for everyone to be... Mr. Dorr?
Bethany, could you by chance tell people our projected timeline, so they can just kind of know where we're at?
So just our, our timeline moving forward from here, in addition to what Mr. Gentry stated, so our, the next planning commission meeting for both planning commissions will be October 23rd at 5:30 PM here in Room 224, for the, for the discussion on this next draft that we will be issuing in the next, within the next month, so the next few weeks. So we'll, we'll do a public, a press release at that time, and we do have that new draft online, and, and then we'll have that October 23rd meeting. And then following that, we will have, as Mr. Gentry noted, this, the legal review will be finishing up in early November is the, is the deadline for us to have that back from them. And then we do anticipate the December meetings for the planning commissions. So the December Mainland Planning Commission, Islands, and Board of Commissioners, if, if the, if the planning commissions forward that draft to the Board, then in December is, is a timeline that we're hoping to look forward to, but of course, we want to get the best drafts possible, and I'm sure we have adequate time to review everything, but that's the timeline that we're, we're currently on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess, I guess we're... Make a motion to adjourn. Thank, thank you all for being here, and hopefully you'll, we'll see you again at, when are we gonna next?
October 23rd.
October 23rd.
October 23rd. You need to adjourn.
Thank you.